This is the Farming Tito's Planning Commission meeting for February 15th, 2024. Meeting will come to order at 7:30 PM. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aspinall?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Stimson?
Here.
Varga?
Here.
Ware?
Here.
And Chair Trefflett?
Here. The approval agenda is next. We have a...
Can I make a motion to move up item 5B, the Historic District Commission Annual Report, up to item 3A or 3B, I'm sorry?
For? Been moved to support it. All those in favor of adjusting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Supported that, I'm sorry? Varga?
You're up.
Good evening to everybody.
Give your name, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is Marlene Toulas. I am the current Chair of the Historic District Commission. And with me is Ken Klemmer, who is the Vice Chair of the Commission. He's here for moral support, I think. Last year, I said that we were short one Commissioner, but that has been rectified this year. So we'll be full speed ahead with a full crowd. In 2023, we stated our goals and objectives and initiatives. As you can see, we were working with the City's Special Services Department with restoration work on the Fieldstone Wall at the Sherman Gudnoff House, and that has been completed. Assist the City's Special Services Department with upcoming work on the Spicer House and implement a comprehensive restoration plan for the site. That is in progress. Continue collaboration between the Commission and the City's Department of Public Works in implementing this cemetery preservation plan, including monument cleaning and resetting. And that is an ongoing process. And if you drive by, stop by, you might see us out there. Continue to update the Blue Book, which is our official guide to the historic districts for accuracy and comprehensiveness. And complete the study of properties identified in the 2022 reconnaissance survey, contacting property owners, informing them of the benefits of historic designation, and work with selecting or identifying new sites for potential designation. Now, this year, for 2024, we will continue to update the Blue Book. We will continue collaboration between the Historic District Commission and the City's Department of Public Works to implement this cemetery preservation plan, which will include additional monument cleaning and resetting. We'll work with the Special Services Department following the Spicer House work. We'll also like get a preservation plan. We had one about four years ago, but bring it up to date, get a current preservation plan for the Spicer House. And if you've been by there, you know that there's more to be done besides just the roof. We would like to host preservation workshops for the public. I put a plural. It could be ambitious, but we would like to take advantage of Preservation Month, which is May. We'll identify properties, additional properties within the city for possible inclusion in the historic district. And the Sarah Fisher site, we will work with the city to assist with the development of the site. But if you've been following things, you know that that's probably going to take a while. In 2023, we held nine regular meetings. We had three meetings that were canceled due to lack of business. And seven certificates of appropriateness were issued. Certificate of... Sorry, go ahead. Certificate of appropriateness was issued for the fractional schoolhouse, which is now known as the Hillal Day School. They... It's a continuously operating school. And so to update it, bring it to ADA... Forget the word, you know?
Compliance.
Compliance, there, thank you. ADA compliance. And spruce it up a bit, we approved ramps that go to the front door and also a ramp in the rear of the building, which they have a deck, which is, they call it their serving deck. So they've also put a coat of paint on there. And it doesn't look like it was built in 1870, but it's a beautiful building, and they've done a very good job bringing it up to date. Next slide. The Halsted Apple Barn, you may not be familiar with this view of the apple barn. Usually see it from Halsted Road, but this is a house that was added in 1901. The barn itself was built in 1891. There were some issues with dogs at the house, and there's a lot of new construction around there. So she was pressured into putting a kennel in for her dogs. And the kennel is there. You look at the brick, and then this dark spot, that dark space is the kennel, is the wire, but I think there's all kinds of vegetation growing on it. So you really can't see that it's an enclosed space for the dogs. The next is the Sherman Gudnoff House. And they're looking to put in smart lighting. The city is moving into the 22nd century, I think. Smart lighting for the parking area. And we were shown different options. And it's a different look nowadays, but that's what's being planned. And that it'll be a citywide thing. Apparently, they'll be able to follow the traffic, follow the weather, lots of stuff. So it's a new technology, and they want to update it, which is a good thing. And next, we have the Lemuel Botford House. They have, they moved here, the Seymourist, from Chicago, Illinois. And when they moved into the house, their intention was to turn it into a pristine or a significant Michigan historic structure, a showcase, basically. So we approved basement windows. They had the old fashioned pane glass, so now they have the glass block windows. We approved a four-foot tall black chain link fence along the north end of the property, which just sort of blends into everything, so really not too noticeable. We approved the resurfacing of their wood decking and changing the railings on the deck. And we approved a generator, which would go in the rear of the building with landscaping screening to retain the structure's historical character. Now, this is kind of like the gateway, if you're going north, to Heritage Park. So it's very visible to people who are driving. And we just listened yesterday to our mayor talking about Farmington Hills, a destination city. Well, here's one of your destinations, and this house is a showcase, taking you there. Okay? So our, I guess these are our selective, our favorites, the master plan of the cemetery implementation. And, you know, they've got some of us commissioners out there working. It's not a setup. We really were working. Survey, historic resource survey that we're doing, Botford Inn exterior restoration, hopefully driven by the Botford Inn, and Spicer House roof replacement. So these are all definite improvements. In that master plan implementation, it began in 2022. Commission undertook leading the preservation of the East Cemetery, East Farmington, the Utley Cemetery, and the West Cemetery. Both of them are along 12 mile. So there's a clean up of the landscape, cleaning of the markers, resetting, restoring the markers, and with volunteers and professional services. And our two leading commissioners on this project, a great deal of progress has been made. We're going to erect this sign in the cemetery. And this sign will inform people that it's the Historic District Commission. It's Schoolcraft College, the Department of History. We had students come out, and the students gathered data. They're going to create a QV code, QR code, sorry. And with this database, they will get, of course, names and specifics like dates, birth death dates, anything else that's on that tombstone, put in the database. Somebody looks up this QR code, and they'll be able to find that grave and get some more information about it. So it's a great, great project, and it's hopefully beginning again in the fall with new history class. So one of our commissioners leads that class. We also had the Boy Scout troop, 45 and 179, come out. And nothing like young muscles. They did a great job. And on the sign, because hopefully people will be questioning, what's going on? What's, you know, what's what? They'll see the sign and to volunteer, who to contact, and kind of making a community outreach project as well. And next slide. I got it? That's pretty much what I just told you. Oh, that is what I told you. Okay. We've seen some successes last year. We've also seen a very critical situation that we are working toward resolving. And this is the Nehemiah Hoyt House, built in 1851, on Howard Street, Howard Road. And just kind of tucked away, isolated in there. It's been abandoned for years. And it came to our attention, and we have been trying to, working our way toward some way of preserving it while all the legalities are being figured out. But as you can see, in August, a tree fell on the house and poked a hole right into the sidewall, kind of trashed the eve. And there's also a hole on the other side and a tree growing that way. So it's in a precarious situation right now. And we do feel for this house. We want to preserve it in one way or another. So that, now, this is a big success, the Botford Inn exterior restoration. It kind of, we talked to the people in late 2022, and throughout the year, with persistence, the owner, well, his, you know, one of the services, special services people from Botford Corwell, worked with us, and we had a whole list of what they had to address. The upper second story was beginning to sag. The wood was beginning to break apart. The shutters were totally gone. And that's the first thing that we noticed, like, where are the shutters? What shutters? What are you talking about? The shutters! And it looked like they had just been sliced off the building. So we worked with them on that. And by the end of 2023, the building had been painted, shutters restored, all the wood that was becoming out of place or broken down was all restored. And the windows were repainted. The storms were cleaned, the windows were cleaned. The outside's beautiful. The inside is another story. We would really like to have them ask us what they could possibly do with the interior, but I don't think Corwell is interested in spending their money there when they have so many other things going on. And the Spicer House roof replacement, you can see on the bottom slide, bottom picture, there are some samples that were put up so we could decide just which color would be best, what ridge tile would be good. And this is, they're not the wood shakes. That's very expensive to replace. So the synthetic shake shingles look so close to it that hopefully nobody will go up and say, oh, those aren't wood shakes. But everything's been delivered since November, December. It's all there, ready and waiting. And maybe they're waiting for the winter to be absolutely out of the way, because who knows? But that's our progress statement, our annual report for 2023, and what we'll be doing in 2024. And I thank you very much. And I say goodnight to you all.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion. I move that the Planning Committee accept the 2023 Historical District Commission Annual Report.
Your support? Support by Steve? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Report's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on each item is a public hearing. One-family cluster option, qualification one of 2023. The location is the south side of Folsom Road between Parker and Lundie Drive. The proponent is Forested River Development LLC, gentlemen are here. Yes. Come on up to the podium, please. Give your name for the secretary.
Yeah, hi. My name is Stuart Michelson. I'm one of the partners in the development. And this is my partner, George Major, who's also a partner.
Hey, go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know if you did the presentation.
No, you're going to do it first.
I'm going to do it first.
You're going to talk. Just make sure you're talking into the microphone so everybody can hear.
Yeah, okay. So we had come before you before, and it's pretty explicit that the site that we have meets the qualifications. There's more than the one that's required. I can list them here for you. The parcel has frontage on a major or secondary thoroughfare and is narrow width, is measured along the thoroughfare, which makes plating difficult. The parcel contains a flood plain or poor soil conditions, which result in substantial portion of the total area of the parcel being unbuildable. Parcel contains natural assets, which would be preserved through the use of cluster development. Such assets may include natural strands of large trees and land which serves, which serves a natural habitat for wildlife, unusual topographic features, or other natural assets which should be preserved. So just to explain, the site originally, when we bought it, we bought it from a previous developer. He had it planned to run... Do you have it on the, can we put it on the screen? The site plan? Can you... Yeah, so the original developer was running the main road from Folsom all the way back to Colfax. He was going to cross the creek, go through the trees, through the wetlands area. So we came up with a different scheme because we felt that we didn't want to touch the creek at all, and we wanted to stay and save many more trees. So we came up with the plan, which we've already submitted, or, well, we submitted the site plan. And we've brought the road out through to Parker. And we've met with all the in-house consultants, the engineering and planning and everybody, and they've all agreed that this is a good plan.
Anything else?
Well, go ahead, George.
It's my understanding that tonight, what we're considering is whether or not it qualifies under the cluster option. And there had been some findings at a prior meeting, as Stuart was mentioning, related to that particular subject. But I know there are other people here that are concerned about wetland preservation and preservation of the trees. Stuart already mentioned that we've modified the plan to try to minimize the impact on both the wetlands and on the trees. We still have to obtain a permit anytime we affect a qualifying wetland. So if we have a sense that the general scheme of the plan is acceptable, we're going to have to go and visit with the, with Eagle Estates Agency that regulates wetlands and present that to them and have a discussion with them about how we can impact the wetlands and what wetlands can be modified and mitigated. Mitigated means that we would replace those wetlands on a basis of two to one in terms of acreage. So we're going to be seeking from Eagle their consultation and a permit, after we've talked with them, concerning this plan that you see now, and seeing if we can find out from them what will be permitted. You are allowed to put roads in. That's not something they have discretion about. That's why the plan that went all the way to Colfax could have been approved because most of it was a road going through the wetlands. We think that's a bad idea. So we have come back with this other modification. So tonight, I hope that you again find that it qualifies. And then we will have to visit with Eagle and find out what the state's opinion is concerning the wetlands.
Let me just add one thing. The Eagle has already been out and walked the site. So they identified, this was a few years ago, so we're going to do it again. And Eagle was out for the previous owner of the land. So we shaded in one of the areas. The only real area is where we're crossing it by lots, 16, 15, where it shaded there. So it's already been walked. Then we hired our consultant to do the wetlands walk. I walked with him. I've walked that site many times. And he re-identified the wetlands. So our next step after we get approved is to, we're going to get another permit and then meet with them again. But it's already been walked. And that's why we came up with the plan that we did, because we already pretty much know where the wetlands are. We've avoided most of the wetlands.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions, or the proponents at this point? If not, Mr. Tangeri, would you like to?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. So before I get into any detail about the cluster plan, there's a couple of things I want to go through first. One is, just to talk about a little bit about what a cluster plan is. We have members of the public here, so they're probably not familiar with the zoning ordinance. They probably, it's just not something that people spend time reading. So I want to just be clear about what the cluster option even is in the first place. So typically, when you do a subdivision, you divide the land into lots, and you put a road through, and you put houses on the lots. What the cluster option does is it sets aside some of the land on a lot, and it puts the units into a smaller area of the lot. Now, our cluster ordinance has kind of a couple of tiers of density that it allows, and I'll get into that later on in the letter. But there is a process for a cluster development. It involves three public hearings. We are having the first of those public hearings tonight. So the first public hearing is at what's called the qualification stage. So that's where we are in the process right now. We're at qualification. And basically, what the Planning Commission does at qualification is it decides whether or not the plan meets a set of criteria that qualify it to be considered for cluster development. If the Planning Commission makes that finding, then they can proceed with a site plan application. They're not, the qualification doesn't guarantee approval of the site plan because the site plan is reviewed separately from the qualification. If the Planning Commission is satisfied with the site plan at the time of that public hearing, then they will forward that plan to city council, who holds its own public hearing. So there's three public hearings. This is the first. This plan was here in November, and the Planning Commission did make a finding that it qualified. There was supposed to be a public hearing held at that time. That did not happen, so we're having it tonight. And I don't know if, Tom, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think the Planning Commission should remember not too long ago, you did look at this plan. You did find that it qualified. And then we realized that it was a cluster, not a PUD, and the qualification was supposed to be a public hearing. It's not for the PUD, but it is for a cluster. So we're doing it again.
Thank you.
Public will get a chance to speak.
Thank you. So getting into the plan itself... or the qualification, anyway. We have a parcel that zoned RA3, single-family residential. Located south of M5 between Farmington Road and Orchard Lake Road. Runs from Folsom Road, which is a frontage road to M5, south to Colfax Road, which is basically eight and a half mile. The existing site's entirely undeveloped, heavily wooded. There's several areas of wetland, consists of all or part of 16 parcels. Basically, a trapezoid connecting Folsom to Colfax, although the, the current applicant has chopped off the connection to Colfax. A small portion juts westward in fronts on Parker Street, and the lots connecting the site to Colfax are kept as outlots in this case. Total acreage of this site is 16.29 acres. 2.47 of that is actually right-of-way, though, so that leaves 13.83 net acres. When we look at the surrounding uses, to the north, you have M5, and then it's single-family homes all around. Site is accessible from Folsom Road and Parker Street. Getting into the cluster qualification, which is what we're here for this evening. The Planning Commission may make a determination that the site qualifies for a one-family cluster based on a set of criteria that we have in Section 317 of the zoning ordinance. So, the qualifications for, conditions for qualification basically are two-tiered. And the first tier allows a certain density, and the second tier allows additional density. They are requesting density that is lower than what's permitted in the first tier, so we're not going to address the second tier tonight because it's not in question. The criteria... And the density that's permitted is 2.6 units per acre under that first tier. So, what they're showing on their plan is 38 units. The number of units that would be permitted at a maximum under that first tier is 42, so they're below that, like I said. We've noted, as they did, that Eagle will be required to weigh in on this before anything happens. But we have our criteria for qualification under Section 317, 2B, 1 through 8. And we've bolded three of those criteria as potentially applying to this parcel. So, one is that the parcel has frontage on a major or secondary thoroughfare and is of a narrow width as measured along the thoroughfare, which makes plating difficult. The parcel contains a floodplain or poor soil conditions, which result in a substantial portion of the total area of the parcel being unbuildable. And the parcel contains natural assets which would be preserved through the use of the cluster development. Such assets may include natural stands of large trees, land which serves as natural habitat for wildlife, or unusual topographic features or other natural assets which should be preserved. Wetlands would qualify as one of those as well. So, those are the criteria that you're really making your consideration, you're basing your consideration on. We did note, based on the concept plan, that, as I said earlier, road connections are proposed to Folsom and Parker. Large area of wetland is shown at the southern end of the property. That's where they're not putting lots. There is a smaller second wetland area where there are some lots shown, and it's really up to Eagle to tell us whether or not those are regulated or not. Some smaller wetlands do not, are not regulated the same way as larger wetlands. Their conceptual plans show street trees and screening trees at the margins of the project, as well as some landscaping of the retention basin. Full review of a cluster site plan would occur at the next stage of approval, should you grant qualification. Under our master plan, this property is designated single-family residential on the future land use map. Doesn't fall into any special residential planning areas or any other special study areas. Surrounding properties have the same designation. And the residential densities map designates the land as medium density, and that category includes RA3 and RA4, and of course, it is currently zoned RA3. Do you have any questions for me?
Any commissioners' questions? Okay, now, I'm gonna open the public hearing. If you'll come up here and give your name and that street, not the number, just the street, to the secretary. If you are speaking for yourself, you have three minutes. If you're speaking as part of a homeowners association officer, you get five minutes, and we will be keeping time. Anybody want to speak?
Just line up over here.
Line up over here, folks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Steve Hall. I live on Parker Street in Farmington Hills. I'm concerned about the water, groundwater drainage. That would be affected by this development. Where's it gonna go? I think we, as homeowners, have a right to know whatever plans are in place for that, if there are any. I know when they put in homes over in the Flanders School property, there were runoff issues for people on Whitlock that weren't addressed by the city. People that lived on Whitlock were pretty much fending for themselves and had water, groundwater issues that they never had before, pre-development. So, I would hope that this would not happen to us. We already have a high-water table on Parker Street, and I'm sure Lundie is similar. So, I think that would be something that would need to be addressed. Also, sewage, where is that going to go? Because right now, we have septic systems. And if this is the case, is groundwater gonna affect our septic systems? Or where are the tie-ins gonna be for the new development with the sewers? I think we all need to kind of know those types of things upfront, and we'd like to know if the city is going to have a long-range plan to protect us as property owners when the developers are done with this and have left. And if we start having issues, who's gonna resolve them? Who's gonna be responsible for those? You know, we didn't make the changes. The city approved them. So, are they also going to approve anything down the road to help protect us and our properties? So, that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Renee Dale, and I live on Lundie. I'd like to just piggyback, especially on the water issue. I did read the report that's online. I do know that they're talking about tying into pipes that are at the end of Lundie, which is only two houses from my house. I have concerns about that. I do have a basement. My sump pump today is running every 1 minute and 22 seconds. That's today. I spent a lot of money to put in a water backup so I would not have to replace my basement every time we have a heavy rain or snow. And as you know, right now, the ground is pretty much frozen, and yet, I'm still running my sump pump every 1 minute and 22 seconds. And it's a big sump pump. It's not just a little one. And when I think back to what my husband and I used to have to do with that sump pump was, you know, when your kids are sick and you both work, you each take, I'll take this time off, you take the next time off. That's what we did with our sump pump, because we had to put a little motor on it with a hose into our sink. Now, I paid mega dollars to have a water backup, and so every time something happens there, I'm paying for extra water to run the water backup, which seems counterintuitive, but it's one of the best ways to do it. I also have been very fortunate that I haven't had any, in 33 years, haven't had any water come up through my basement, but I, now I'm afraid it's going to, because I don't know that what's already there, that's been there for years, is truly gonna support this many more homes that they're going to put in these woods, as well as tearing down trees. Now, you don't have the root system, one, to hold in the support, and two, to absorb the water. There are many, many trees back there, and as much water as there is, and I will say that I live on the other side of the stream, but this still concerns me greatly. One, for my neighbors, and two, for myself, as I walked back there, and I said, "I'm gonna walk, and I'm gonna cross the creek, and I'm gonna go see what's back there," because there, it's not easy to walk back there. And I walked, and I couldn't even get back there. There's so much water. So, I am concerned. I'm also concerned with DTE. Our power goes out all the time, all the time. Now, we're gonna add more to what we already have? I agree. I think we need to know the whole plan. I read the plan, like I said. I see where they want to tie in to the sewer system. I, I get all that, but it's not easy to read. I would love to see a question and answer with whoever, Eagle, the builders. I, I don't think it should be just a meeting between Eagle and the builders. I think some of us have to be there. They stopped construction on our road because we had a turtle having babies in the culvert, and they had to stop the road.
Thank you.
Bill, this is hard, especially when it involves the destruction of the only remaining unchanged green space.
Bring the mic down, Mary.
Sorry, okay. Okay. Destruction is hard, especially when it involves the destruction of the only remaining green, unnatural space in the city. I stood here as a young homeowner 30 years ago with my family in front of Mayor Vagnazi in the old city hall, when the city was then interested in purchasing the property as a part of a DNR grant. Of course, tiles were not clean. Developer changed. We kind of lost sight of what was important in the city, and of course, leadership changed. But I've not, this is not the first developer we've talked to or we've had to confront. So... Today, we are, we are not a big, powerful homeowners association. We are, we are friends. We are neighbors. We want to hear our voices heard. But we also want to be the voices for those, for the large 100-plus-year-old trees in the, in the woods. All the wildlife. We kind of like the deer down here. Most, unlike most of the city, they don't like the deer. We've got species of animals that we don't see out of anyplace else but in this woods. So, we want to be, and also for the natural stream, which, looking at this diagram, doesn't even consider, the stream actually goes through the property. So, I don't see where it comes, where it's gonna be preserved, because there's a road going next to it, to access off of Parker, and where is it going to exit over on Lundie Street? So, I don't ever see where the property's going through. It's very difficult to sit here and listen to the, oh, Eagle is gonna be involved, and it's been a couple of years ago, because things change, landscape change. Now, I'm over on Lundie Street. I don't have a basement. I have a crawl space. But we've had to purchase a generator because if the power goes out, the water will rise all the way to the base of my first floor very quickly. So, with all this development, and of course, probably you may not know that the south, the north end, sorry, the, yes, the north end, is where all the water's at. This is where the homes are going to. If you come off of Folsom, spring, any time of the year, you better have your water wings on, because you're gonna be up to your knees and maybe sometimes your waist in water. Again, my backyard, we flood all the time. And you won't be able to be out there for months and weeks at a time because of the amount of water. So, I'm also concerned for my neighbors, because again, they've got septic, they've got well. They're over on Parker. They've got a dirt road. So, again, what's gonna happen to their wells and their septic fields? And we have, we'll have, they'll walk away, and they'll, we'll have no protection over there. So, the plan leaves a lot of questions. Also, what is the setbacks? Are they right against our property lines? What other barriers are they looking for? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newlin. Next?
Hi, I live on, my name's Lori Williams. I live on Parker. They addressed the water runoff and everything. We have a septic field. We have two sump pumps running underneath the house. My other concern is, what is gonna be the barrier between our backyard and the subdivision? Is there, are they putting in fencing, privacy, brick wall, how high? We're all going to lose that nice sense of privacy back there. I also have a concern about, our street, Parker, is the only throughway from 8 Mile to Folsom. We get so much traffic on a dirt road, throwing rocks and dirt. We have no streetlights. We have no sidewalks. So, kids are stuck walking in the road, or elderly. We have a gentleman that walks a dog every day. So, with all this increased traffic, I mean, we have a hard time controlling, we'll put, I called the police department one time and said, "Sit in my driveway." Ticket people going down our street. They're going 40 miles an hour. So, that's, that's a huge concern with an increase of traffic on Parker. I'm sorry. Oh, and, and what about the preservation of endangered species such as trees, plants? There was an anebia that, on the river right there, that they want to put this entrance. And the homeowner next to that had actually started digging out a trench of the river, because our road was flooding and washing out. He got a huge fine, huge fine, because he disturbed some sort of endangered anebia. I know for a fact there's Trillium. That's on the endangered list back there. So, that's just some of my concerns right now. Don't mind me. So, yeah, oh, and, and the construction to end at 7 o'clock, I mean, if this goes through, the heavy equipment coming through there at that hour, I, I don't know if I want to see that major. I mean, what is it gonna do to our dirt road, that heavy construction equipment running down a dirt road? It's gonna tear it up. We have pits, potholes huge already. And, you know, so that increased traffic on Parker is a major concern for me, not to mention the water runoff and what it's gonna do to my field. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
How's everybody doing? All right. I live on Lundie Drive. I'm looking at this map, and I'm thinking my house has gotta be down around 14, 15, something like that. My question is, how big are these lots? I mean, the thing that attracted me to this neighborhood, we moved in 25 years ago, is we got about an acre lot, and we back up the woods, so we had, you know, privacy, and we had a lot of room to do what we're gonna do. All of us have dogs, you know, we, we enjoy our life there. And you guys are kind of trying to destroy that for us. My, my, my thing is, it looks like you're trying to pack in as many houses as you can, you know, in the short space. So, that's, that's a concern of mine. Another concern of mine is, I'm gonna lose property value. When you put people behind us, the thing that enticed me to the neighborhood was the woods. So, you're gonna take away my property value, and you're gonna take away my privacy. Not a big fan of that. So, I'm all for development. You know, if you guys lose a school and they want to develop that land, that's one thing. But when you're taking away the woodlands, we've got, you know, red fox out there, we've got possums, we've got, you know, raccoons, all kinds of, all kinds of wildlife. And, and deer, I mean, we've got deer bed down in our yards, you know. Every morning I go out, and I can see, you know, probably eight, 10 of them in my neighbor's yard, you know, where they bed down. And, you know, it's a beautiful sight, but where are they gonna go? So, I mean, that's a concern, but my thing is, you know, you got wetlands at the front of the sub, which is why they're not bringing that street in there. And then they're not showing another wetlands, probably halfway to three-quarters of the way down, which is behind my neighbor's house, which is right around lot, I don't know, 14, 15. And then you got the creek, which you kind of show here to the right. I guess they're not gonna develop that because they can't. But you're not being true to the scale here on your wetlands, okay? We got more back there than what you're showing here, you know. My biggest concern, though, is what it's gonna do to my privacy and my property value. And then again, people with septic tanks and the water runoff, where is that all gonna go? You know, they're gonna put sewers in and try and accommodate for that. I don't see it happening, you know. And I'm a new construction guy. I'm all for new construction, but there's certain times and certain places where you gotta put this stuff into effect. And when you got something like natural woodlands like this, we're running out of it in Farmington. You don't have a lot of it left. You don't have a lot of it left and where are these, where are these animals going to go? I mean, not just, you know, I understand it's, you know, we're growing as a population and you've got to make accommodations, but, I mean, we, we've got to think about the other side too. So, you know, think about this, guys. I mean, put yourself in our shoes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Would you like to leave your name?
Sure.
What was your name?
It was Paul Rusonowski.
Paul Rusonowski?
Yep.
Thank you.
Next.
My name is Neil Krantz, um, I live on Lundie Drive. I have, my father-in-law lives on Parker. As everyone said, the, the wetlands takes up, you know, a substantial amount of space in the center of that property. They're going to, I'm not sure how they're going to, um, drain that off. Same thing, some, my sump pump runs all day long, every day, constantly working on it. The water table is just insane. My father-in-law is concerned about, uh, the, the traffic on Parker. It's, it's, it's already bad. Like, like everyone has said, you know, people go thirty, forty miles an hour down there. You add this amount of, you know, more people going through there, it's going to be, it's going to be detrimental. Same thing goes with the property value. My, my main concern though is the, the water and where that's going to go. And, and if you, if you went, looked at the, the way the woods drains off into our yards already, there's, there's, there's no way they can bring the, the, the ground down enough to drain it off into the, into the wetland that they're, you know, or retention pond or whatever they're doing at the end there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Kirk Bowman. I live on Folsom Road up at the corner on Lundie. Uh, I'd like to say a few things about the water and animal situation, tree situation going on here. First of all, uh, no one here is exaggerating about the amount of water going on. That's all a hundred percent the case. I can also say that behind my house on what are lots one and two on this map, you can see on a satellite map of things, there is an area where you don't see trees. That's because this area, which for some reason isn't called a wetland, is constantly wet with multiple inches of water, deep enough where ducks are going swimming around in there. There are these, uh, large reed things coming off there and a huge, very nice willow right next to that. So that's going to be a lot of water that's going to have to be displaced. I can also say that in the drainage ditch next to my house, that water is constantly there and flowing at a very high speed, which means we already have a lot of water running through that. And I'm not talking like, oh, after it rains it does that. I mean, for months at a time, it has a foot deep of water going non-stop when it rains heavy, like, and we got a lot of water, like, I think it was last week. I effectively have a moat around my house because there's a lower area around on all the sides, which, uh, isn't so great for my neighbors because they tend to have water issues and I've actually had to drain water into the essentially moat around my house. And so there is a ton of water that is constantly being displaced there and most of that soil is really clay and rocky, so it's not going to take that water very well to begin with. As for the animals, there are all the deer, they said, I can tell you there are a mating pair of great horned owls because we can hear the difference between those two. We have other raptors that come through, there's a few hawks, a number of other birds and, uh, there's at least a pack of coyotes back there, which I've heard a few times when they go into mating season. So there are a number of these issues here that, uh, I just don't think the construction's going to be able to handle that water or the animal issue and the displacement of it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Denise Hall and I live on Parker Street and we've been there for approximately forty years now. And living on a dirt road, it can be pretty nasty, I'm going to say, almost fifty percent of the year, whether it's the dust, whether it's a half an inch of snow and you get all the dibbets from the cars going up and down. Uh, it's a narrow road, I can't imagine them starting to bring trucks up and down, what that's going to do to the road and it's going to cost the city a whole lot more money to keep this road maintained, which is already quite an expense. But the water situation is pretty unbelievable. Um, our neighbors who just moved in a few years ago, um, when my kids were small, the water would fill up in his backyard that they could take up a blow-up boat and go row their boat in his yard across the street from him, the Smith family, the same thing, it still happens to this day. When the waters come really hard or we have very heavy snows, that whole front yard fills up, it covers the road, okay? So it looks like, I look out my window and it looks like a lake that's, you don't even see the dirt road, okay, for all the water that's back there. Our backyard to go cut the lawn, nine, I can barely cut the back quarter of my property, we have about an acre until June, and even when I go back there in June, I have to wear my rubber boots because it's still so soggy. Um, same thing, we all have septic tanks. Uh, what's going to happen if they decide to put this in there? I, again, I don't know where this water is going to go, it is so bad right now. So then is the city, once they're gone and we have problems with our septic tank, will they take the responsibility to spend the money to repair them? I don't think so. You can't go back to the builder and say, "Look what you've done. You built up that property so high to put in all of this, this building for, for what?" And, and this is a beautiful piece of property, I wish any one of you would just come, just drive down our road, okay? Drive down that dirt road just to see what it's like to live on a dirt road and then take a little walk back there. I don't see half the streams that are still there that it, I, he says, they've got all covered up with houses. We have fox, we have deer, we have great horned owls, we have hawks. The amount of wildlife that's there is incredible. You don't have that in cities anymore. If there's any way, Farmington Hill talks about being a, a community that people want to come and visit and look at, save this piece of property. Make it a little piece of property that people could walk through and appreciate and say, "Wow, you should go to Farmington and go see that wildlife." But I, I just hope you guys think twice about tearing down more woods just to build more houses. There's a lot of other places in the community that already have about abandoned car dealerships, abandoned strip malls. Take those spots, put in some houses, put in some condominiums and some nice shrubbery and trees over there. Don't take down all these trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Drago Sayonescu. I live on Lundie and my house is the third one as you enter, uh, back into the woods, kind of where number one, two, three, four are. Um, I, you guys heard about the water, I'm going to say some more about the water. Literally behind my house, there is a pond, which I believe Joe there said, there's some smaller parts with wetlands, that's probably one of them. I would say that's actually the biggest wetland because it's a pond. It's got cattail vegetation, eight foot tall or taller and about an acre of it. It's not like, there's no dark body, if you come in the summer, it's knee-deep. Now, that water needs to go somewhere. When I look at this plan, I have credibility issues with it. Like, there's number one, two, three and four there, there's a road, uh, sounds like it's been reviewed multiple times and yet we're looking at something that I cannot believe it's there. So, uh, I, I'm a landowner, I don't own land in Farmington, I want to develop where I am, but I don't believe in this plan, the way I'm seeing it right now. And we all heard other things, but like, water is a problem, it's not addressed here. They're sure, there's the river thing, the river thing is not as bad as the entrance on the road, you guys got to walk those woods, I don't know if you did.
Please address your, please address your comments to me, not to them.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
My first time here.
I understand.
I'm actually done with this.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Bowman, I'm on Folsom but also Lundie. The water is a big concern, um, especially because, in fact, as everyone has said, the first several plots of supposed housing there, um, off of Folsom, in fact, is probably at least a foot and a half deep of water right now. It has been that way since October. It gets its lowest when it's very hot in August and it gets to about two inches deep of water, it's, I've never seen it go lower than that, so where is the water going to go? It, it's not going to go into this development because they're going to build it up enough that it's going to come into my backyard, into my neighbor's backyard. It's going to flood us even more. I mean, right now, there's water in our yard. It, it's right by the utility pole, that's always wet, so at some point the utility pole's going to rot and that's going to fall and cause issues. You know, we are already taxed with power issues. We purchased solar for our home recently because of all of the power issues that we've had. My household works from home one hundred percent of the time, so we have to have the power. So what is the construction going to do to our nine-to-five while we're working? It's going to completely disrupt, um, everything that we hear, everything that we see, it's going to take away the beauty of the reason why we moved to Farmington Hills. We've only been here eight years, but we'd like to stay longer, but if you're going to continue to take away the beauty of the reason why everyone has lived here, has stayed here, has moved here, what's the point? Do you want people to like the city? Because I think a lot of that nature and the wildlife and the woods are a very big pull for people to live here, to stay here, to love it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane from Parker. I recently took a look at the, and compared the amount of golf parks versus actual parks with wooded area in Farmington Hills and unsurprisingly, there are more acreage, there is, there is more acreage of golf parks than there is of actually wooded areas. The two biggest parks that we have in Farmington Hills being Heritage and Woodland Hills. Looking at Farmington, or looking at Parker and the Lundie Woods, you've got sixteen acres and this development is looking to get rid of about seventy-five percent of that displacing wildlife, displacing water, which you guys have heard plenty about, which should be pretty obvious. And we're currently living in an age where weather is becoming more severe. You are taking out all of these trees, which prevent a lot of the wind that comes through. This past year, we've had so many trees come down from the wind alone, taking out all of those trees behind our house is only going to make that problem worse, causing more downed power lines, more power issues, which is already an issue to be seen, as you've heard. But I think that pretty much covers my point, so I will leave the floor to somebody else.
Thank you.
Scott Elser, Parker Street. I share all the sentiments, the water, the drainage, all those things. I realize forward progress can't always be stopped, I'd love for this not to change. My issue would be with all the bending over backwards for the developers. This was zoned a certain way decades ago for a reason. So to let them squeeze these things in at what, fifty feet, I believe, is what they end up at? If anything, stick to the zoning that's supposed to be there. You know, in nineteen eighty-four, my family asked to build a new garage, city said, "You can only go this high." We have zoning rules for a reason, for appearance, for aesthetic, for the feel of the neighborhood. I'd love for this to not happen, if it's going to happen, make them play by the rules that you've put in place years ago. They don't want to deal with the wetlands. They know it costs more money. We realize that with any amount of money in engineering, they can work around a lot of these things. They don't want to do that. They want to squeeze more stuff into a smaller space because they've got a profit margin. They've got a number in their head. Make them build to the zoning if they get to build.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Sebold, I'm on Parker Street. I'm on Parker Street right where that road comes out onto Parker Street. I'm the first house there. We're on the lowest part of Parker Street, that's why we've got a creek that runs through there, it's a watershed. Up until three years ago, every year that I lived there, and I've been there for fifty-four years, um, water washed out the road where the stream runs because there's not enough drainage, uh, to take the water from the marsh across the street from your development, across the street. So the water goes over the street, floods everybody. I have two, I have two sump pumps. I use a, a battery-driven converter to run my pumps when, when we lose power periodically. My, I have a couple of concerns, one of them is personal. Like I said, I am living fifty feet from that road. My bedroom window will be fifty feet from that road. Fifty feet, even at my age, I can throw a rock or, or a baseball or anything, fifty feet, it isn't a long ways. I can see for fifty feet. It's going to be a little disruptive. I'm sure that the road that's going to go in is going to be top-notch. Parker Road started out as a two-track road for farmhands not that many years ago. My house is about a hundred years old. My neighbor's homes, a lot of them are, they were built out of scrap wood to accommodate the farmworkers when they were first built. Parker Street can't take the water right now, even though the people put ditches in and everything else fifty years ago to help it. At least the road doesn't become impassable now. It's a big improvement over fifty years. I'm concerned about Parker Street. There are, we asked the city, um, years ago to put a couple of stop signs up on Parker Street to slow the traffic down because there are no stop signs on Parker Street from Folsom Road all the way to Eight Mile. So we have, you know, kind of a racetrack and, uh, the city couldn't accommodate it for whatever reason. We have, we have another generation of young people coming back onto Parker Street, it's kind of fun, we've got babies now and three-year-old kids, it's a joy to see, but we don't have sidewalks and, you know, a five-year-old kid wanders out into the road quite a bit. This would probably at least double the traffic on Parker Street because it's a pain in the neck getting from that street or our street or Lundie onto Folsom Road when things are running.
Thank you. Time is up.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, one other comment.
Sure.
When I, I was at the inauguration for the city of Farmington Hills and during the inauguration, one of the officials said, "We, we want to develop Farmington Hills to be a first-class city, but we want to retain," fact is, if you look at the coat of arms, you'll see evidence of it, "we want to retain that rural feel." Guess what? We are the rural feel. Thank you.
Thanks. Applause, please, thank you. Next.
Have to follow applause? Okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Parker Street. Moved here about four years ago and I love this neighborhood, it has an up-north vibe and as you've seen, many of our neighbors have been here for thirty-plus years and that's one of the reasons I moved here and love it so much. It reminds me of where I grew up. Um, I looked over the material that was shared online and I do have a lot of questions that I'd like to see addressed. And what is the entrance of Parker being used for? Is it the main entrance or is it at Folsom? I live off of Parker, just to the north of where that would be and I have a feeling we'll have a lot of extra traffic coming by there. And as a lot of other people have already talked about, um, the traffic is, is a concern. We already have, um, a lot of people speeding down Parker and, um, a few years ago, our road washed out at the area where the watershed is and where the road is proposed, right there at Parker Street. They put an orange cone out and the city was able to come and fix, fix it a few days later. So, um, I'm concerned again about the traffic on our road. This is a throughway between Eight Mile and Folsom and people are already driving here too fast, there's trucks, there's a lot of industrial, uh... There's trucks, there's a lot of industrial along Eight Mile where people use this to drive through. Buses and delivery drivers are already going too fast, and with more residents, there'd be more traffic. What are the city's plans, if any, to better control the speeding traffic? I know people have mentioned stop signs, speed bumps, little digital speed zones that remind people to be going safe and slow along this neighborhood with children that live on these streets. We want it to be safe for our pedestrians and our walkers and our bikers, which currently it's already a little hazardous because of the small dirt road and with this extra traffic, what is that gonna look like? People have talked about nature and wildlife, and I'd like to echo that as well. From our home, we can hear great-horned owls in our backyard, right out of our backyard. I've personally seen red-tailed hawk, box turtles that have nested, and fox, deer, coyotes. We have a beautiful swamp in this watershed here. It's right where the development is being proposed. And just last week, there was a herd of eight deer that I watched cross the road right there where the proposed street would come through on Parker. And they, they jumped right across that river. There is a little river that runs right there. I'm not sure how they're planning to put a road over that. And the construction is a main concern that I have about how it could last until 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Some children go to bed earlier than 7:00 PM, and what the chainsaws will be like, and also the construction trucks going past along Parker, hard on our dirt roads, muddy in the spring, and dirty in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
May I brought some pictures of the flooding, the water?
Sure.
So that you know we're not just making.
Oh, no, I know. I've driven the street. Anyone else? You gonna, you gonna speak to this?
Yep. My name's Michelle Gaila, and I have probably lived on Parker longer than anyone else. Surprisingly, I have been there for 56 years, okay? My grandmother moved in there in 1942. My house is over 100 years old. I'm currently the third house over from the stream there. I have seen everything you could possibly see on that street. We have fought to keep it dirt. So I know everybody's complaining, or not complaining, but talking about the dirt road. We have fought to keep that dirt. I was there in 19, I guess, '73, a month before City of Farmington Hills became a city, when we were all out there digging ditches because our road would wash out so bad, you had to park it Folsom and walk to your house. You know, so we have seen every possible thing. They talk about water. It's a ridiculous problem. I can't dig a hole in my backyard to plant a bush without it filling in. They're talking, "Oh, we walked this whole area." They walked it in the fall, not in the spring, like those pictures show, not when there's rain, not when there's things washing out. We have been, somebody else talked about riding in a boat or a canoe in the Smith's front yard, right there. How is, you know, I walked to Flanders. They talk about Flanders. Did they realize that after they put that in there, those people went to existing neighbors asking for money for the playground? They don't care about any of that. They're not addressing the fact that there's gonna be, what, 70 more vehicles running up and down the street? We have one speed limit sign behind a pine tree when you first turn onto Parker from Folsom. One. That's all you see going southbound. We have huge, we've had to contact Clarenceville Public Schools because their school buses go flying down that street at a ridiculous speed. I will say, though, Farmington School Bus does not do that whatsoever. So give one to that. You guys do take really good care of the street. If it's a lot of potholes, all you can do is pick up the phone and say, "Hey, we have the same thing with the freeze thaw. We have cars going into those ditches in the wintertime because they go so fast down that street." As you can see from all the wildlife I just gave you, we have been in touch with Eagle recently. The DNR, when we had those owls born, we saw them with their white feathers. They came back and said, "That is very special and uncommon, and congratulations." That's coming from the DNR. That's not coming from, you know, a city or whatever. That's coming from them. Turtles, we were talking about the snapping turtles. When they build nests right there where that water is, can you imagine what it's like for a little girl to see that and watch the turtle go across the street? People have talked about forts. Again, these kids are outside playing. They're not in front of screens all day long, you know? At one point, I think it was like 20 years ago, the meeting we had, the city actually considered before, when they told the longtime developer, "No, you're not gonna do this again," the city actually considered with the state to put that as a nature park.
Thank you. Your time is up. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, one more.
My name is Heather Trapcheck. I live on Parker. I've been there for 40 years, and we bought the house for my folks. And I lived there before, in junior high, in 1973, when the whole neighborhood got together to dig ditches on their own with no help from the city. The water has been an issue for all these years, but we are dealing with it. My concern, part of this is, Farmington always talks about maintaining green space. Here's a beautiful forest, green space. We got all these empty strip malls along Grand River, empty dealerships sitting there. They're all cement already. Why do you want to take out all these trees that are, are life? Our life force the trees in all these, with the global warming and all this, whether you believe in it or not, the trees are our friends. People whose houses are washing away, they go, "Oh, I shouldn't have taken out all the trees." This is important to us. We need to leave some green space, some trees. There's not enough room in there. Bringing in all this dirt, it's just gonna be a mess. I really wish each and every one of you would just take that little walk through those woods. It's gorgeous. And I hope you do the right thing and not just the monetary thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, now I'm gonna close the public hearing. Would the developer like to respond to any of this?
Well, right now, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could say, and this is pretty traditional because we've been doing this for over 40 years. As far as traffic, as far as traffic.
Uh, 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 he's talking.
Can I, I've listened for an hour. I just wanna say that we, one of the things is, we would make sure that all of our construction traffic drives up our new road and doesn't drive up Lundie or Parker. Well, and we've done this before in other communities where we had similar, Wooddale. We had a similar situation when we did the Wooddale school site. And that was, we, we made sure that the trades followed a certain route so that they didn't disturb people. And we didn't have dirt road then, but this is a dirt road. Just in general, let me just say that. The water concerns, when we develop a new subdivision, we have to go through your engineering department. We've done that numerous times in numerous developments. Our sites, I know it's hard for anybody to believe, but our sites are self-contained. We put in separate storm sewers. We grade so that we have storm sewers in the rear yards of our lots. We have everything graded so that it doesn't drain onto any of the neighbors. It all goes into a detention, where it's retained and held for a long period of time. So we're not gonna add anything. As a matter of fact, what we find, even on our own sites, when we dig and find underground water, is when we start putting in all the storm sewers, it drains the site. So it very often will help the other neighbors. We have a separate sanitary. We're not doing septic's. So all of our, all of our sanitary sewer will go into a city sewer. In general, that said, I mean, we've also found, because we've done many infill sites before, that the property values actually go up, and we find many times the people in the neighborhood want a new house, don't wanna leave the area, and are happy to buy a, a new house for us. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Have you had any discussions with Edison about enough, enough power in the area to supply?
Yeah, we've checked with DT.
Thirty-eight homes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For clarity, one, thank, thank you for answering the question about the road because a couple of, of residents here, that question, and so did I, for clarity, that you're building the road first, and then all of your trucks are going down there.
Yeah.
But are you building 16 houses or 21?
It's 38.
Thirty-eight.
You're building 38 houses?
Thirty-eight.
Okay, so then the paperwork is not accurate.
No, it's, it's, it shows it on the lot.
It's on, it's on the drawing, but it's not in the paperwork. The paperwork says 16 houses. Okay.
Let me, may I?
All right. That was, that was the answer. And then the other thing is just really a comment. When you talk about speed down streets, the residents can order a traffic study from the city so that they could request speed bumps. However, if your road is dirt, you may not be able to get the speed bumps because the speed bumps are made of asphalt. So just consider that when you're saying you're worried about traffic. There is a remedy, but you have to also be willing to go from dirt road to asphalt. That's it.
I was just gonna respond as a clarification. There are 16 different parcels that make up the property that we are now proposing 38 houses for.
That's the clarity.
So we're combining those 16 parcels.
Understood. Thank you for the clarity.
And I'd like to tell all our neighbors that everything we've heard about, that I've heard about, Stuart has heard about, water problems in the area are, concern us. We're gonna be building several basements in areas that I just heard fill with water all the time. We, we, we don't wanna do that. So we have to make sure that whatever system we create takes water away from areas where the basements could end up with problems like some of you are experiencing. And in addition to that, we have to retain all the water that's attributable to our property on our site before it goes into a public system. So we have to design it so that it doesn't contribute any additional problems to any of the adjacent properties. And the engineering department of the city is going to be studying that very carefully, especially after hearing all of your statements about conditions that you have. So this is something we'll have to work on to make sure that it is taken care of.
I have a super question. If you, Stuart, does that mean after you leave, you resolve it and you do have a lot of, you just want to?
Well, first of all, when we go through, you gotta understand the procedure. We have, our engineer who's here designs a system. He has to, he sends it to the city for approval. They do a very thorough review of the sanit, of the sanitary and the storm sewer system. And it's all verified that this system is gonna work. We've been doing this for over 40 years, and I personally have never seen a failure in any of our systems. Now, your problems, totally different. We had nothing to do with that. Those are issues that you need to deal with. But our, our site, believe me, is gonna be self-contained, may even help you in some situations.
Ma'am, 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 may I suggest that you take this out in the hallway with the developer so I can move ahead with the meeting? No, no, that's okay. We're all learning here. You have anything else to add?
I think we're all.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions for the developer before they leave, walk away.
Thank you.
I do have, just, I just heard some things about the, like the setbacks. Can you share that with the residents? And they talked about, like, a traffic, was there a traffic report done for the area?
The primary roadway is going to be the one that feeds to and from.
I can hear you.
The primary roadway is gonna be the one that feeds to and from Folsom. Parker is something that the city has requested because they wanna see through traffic to support emergency vehicles. And so we agree with the concept and the necessity of doing that. In addition, the design of the lots is based on your ordinances related to these kinds of developments. And again, we take larger lots, make them smaller, preserve the wetlands. That's the concept. So that's how the setbacks, the lot widths are determined. Hopefully that answers the question. The details are on the drawing.
Oh, yeah. I was just, for their references.
Okay, so to answer your question, the houses, it's on the plan, too, as a matter of fact, but the, the houses are based on the ordinance. It's a, the front yard setback from the property line, not from the road, but from the property line is 30 feet. And the rear yard is 35 feet. Now, our lots are designed to be over 100, they're like 154 feet deep. Our houses are generally 50 feet. So we're gonna have a huge backyard.
Okay.
Lot width?
Well, the lot widths are 55 feet, and the side yard requirements within, within.
Just a reminder of where we are in this process. At the very beginning, question of, are you even going to let them use the cluster? Or are you gonna wreck, are you gonna say they can use the cluster? Please proceed. It's nice that there's a plan. This may not end up being anything like the plan that gets built. So talking about setbacks and engineering for water, those are all details that will come out later. Right now, you're just answering the question, are there environmental features and lot configuration, overall site configuration so that it makes sense to use the cluster? But you're not evaluating this plan at all right now.
Thank you.
That comes later.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Are there any questions left? Any members? Okay. One thing, our next public hearing is on the capital improvement plan, which I'm sure no one has read, but there is, in the capital improvement plan for number 13 is a Folsom Road storm sewer from Nine Mile to Orchard Lake Road. This project provides lateral storm sewers for Folsom, Nine Mile to Orchard Lake, as well as the rehabilitation of the existing storm sewer system. And that's all I know. We don't have an engineer here. That's the public document. It's online. If you wanna take a look at it more, it's number 13 in there, and we'll be, we'll be adopting this hopefully in the next hearing. So there is something coming. I, I don't know the year yet, but it's coming, hopefully. Okay. Back to the commission for a motion.
I can, do you want to make a motion?
Sure.
I move to make a preliminary determination that one-family cluster option 1 2023 dated October 13th, 2023, submitted by Forest at Riverwalk Development LLC, meets the following qualification standards as set forth in section 34, 3.17, dot 2, dot B of the zoning ordinance. Those are items 2, 6, and 8, permitting a maximum density of 2.6 units per acre, and that it be made clear to the applicant that final granting of the one-family cluster option is dependent upon a site plan to be approved by the city council following review and recommendation by the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved and supported for discussion. Yes?
Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm supporting this. Again, this is the first of multiple hearings on this. There's a lot on this I don't like still. I think it's, I think a 55-foot width is a little too, actually quite a bit too narrow. But at this point, I'd like to give the proponent a chance to come back, address the water concerns, work with engineering on it, work with Eagle on it, and, and let's see what the plan is. But just to let the proponent know, I, personally, I think the, what, the lot widths are way too narrow, and the homes are gonna be right on top of each other, which I think's a little out of character for this area. So, but let's see what you can come back with in a plan. I wanna, I wanna give you the opportunity to come back with a, a plan that's acceptable to us. And also, I'd like to encourage you to work with the neighbors and, and, and consult with them, get their feedbacks, and try to work with them as much as possible.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, I'm gonna roll call, please.
Commissioner Aspinall?
Yay.
Grant?
Yes.
Stimson?
Yes.
Varga?
Yes, I'd just like to emphasize the developer takes into consideration everything we've heard from our residents tonight and the concerns. heard from our residents tonight and the concerns.
Ware?
Yes.
And Chair Truflet?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, this goes to council.
No.
Back to us.
Back to us.
And you'll be notified. Right? Chris?
Yep, side plan.
Yes, you'll be notified.
Still confused, but I get where I made my first mistake is when I read the 16 acres, I read it.
Was this only approved for 16?
No, not that part.
Okay.
It, it's the number of units, but I, I understand now that where I read 16 parcels, I took it as 16 units.
Well, no, that was, that was, that would be a difference.
I'm, I'm reading all the documents. They're just asking for a cluster option where they.
If I like to sit with them.
The 16 parcels and then reimagining.
Oh, they do.
Units.
Well, and we just.
One of the things they'll need to address in the plan. This will be, this will be.
This drawing, he said, when he pointed to it, that this was the old developer's drawing. But this doesn't even show.
It does, that's 38 right there.
Best 38.
That's 16.
I wasn't able to.
I had a feeling that they're going to be able to.
And everybody tried to do that.
Well, not like this because he's.
They put in sewers and, and the.
Yeah. Right. And then you're like. Spaces and I need 47. Got to vary it.
Not going to move any sidewalks.
Yep. No problem.
All right.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing on the capital improvement plan for 2024 through 29 and 2030. The action is adoption of the plan.
You just adopted?
Do we just?
Jerry heard about it?
Didn't y'all go through the whole meeting?
Can I just make a motion?
But you have to open the public, you have to.
Oh.
Through the process, yes.
Okay.
Open a public hearing, hearing no public.
Okay, I'm opening the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to that? No? Okay. Seeing that, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Out to the commission. Now.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to adopt the City of Farmington Hills Capital Improvements Plan for 2024, 2025 to 2029, 2030, as presented, and that plan may be forwarded to city council.
Support.
It's moved and supported.
We.
Cheryl, roll call vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Aspinall?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Stimson?
Yes.
Varga?
Yes.
Ware?
Yes.
Chair Truflet?
Yes. Okay, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a rezoning request, ZR 1 dash 1 dash 2024. The location is 31118 Orchard Lake Road. The proponent is Manic and Smith Group or the Hanala Loser Road Development. That would be you guys? Because there's no one else left.
Lucky you.
Yeah, I'm going to pass the baton to Julia for this one.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Truflet. This site is located on Orchard Lake at Melfortin, just south of 14 Mile. It's split zoned currently with B3 on the frontage and vehicular parking district in the rear. The site currently includes a, a structure in the front part of the site, and the rear part of the site is used as parking. There's also some parking in the side. The applicant's proposing to rezone the entire site so that it's one zoning classification and that it's all zoned as B3. That is consistent with the future land use designation, which is non-center type business. In addition to this designation, the site is located in the Orchard Road mixed-use redevelopment area. The proposed zone, or the proposed rezoning would accommodate the, the use desired by the applicant, but the current zoning of P1 would not accommodate that use. There are some structural non-conformities present with the existing structure. However, that structure is already on the portion of the lot that's zoned B3, so that's not a concern when it comes to this rezoning. With that, I think we'll go through the review standards in greater depth when we actually present the rezoning at a public hearing. But at this time, we just ask the commissioners to schedule a public hearing to discuss this rezoning.
Do you want to hear, we should hear from, yeah, you guys showed up. Come on. Tell us what you want to do.
Good evening, members of the commission. Jeffrey Schroder, on behalf of the owner and applicant, we have read the report from the planning department, and we're in concurrence with the report. We're here to answer any preliminary questions that you may have. Otherwise, we will look forward to the public hearing proceeding at that point.
And are you from Manic Smith?
I'm with a law firm, a plunket Cooney.
Thank you.
This is a car wash?
Well, the, this is being done to accommodate a proposed car wash in an adjacent property, but we're doing this in pieces. This is the first parcel we've, working with the, the landowner there to rezone this piece, so.
This is an empty store right now, right? It was the pet store?
Yeah, you're talking about the subject property, yes.
Yeah. And then it goes back, it goes all the way back to that small office back behind you through the?
Oh, yeah. Near Green and Street.
Yeah, there's tree, part of that is trees too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's quite a, what, two acres?
Just over an acre.
Just over an acre? Okay.
I'm Dennis Miller, I'm a consultant for the car wash company that we're going to develop on the site.
Is this the unknown car wash, or can you tell us the name?
It's called Clean, Clean Express. We don't have any open Detroit area yet, we're at a Columbus.
Okay.
Closest ones are in Toledo.
Okay.
But we're going to convert the building into a car wash.
Really?
We're not tearing down the building.
Oh, wow.
So it's kind of a repurpose of building and doing kind of a neat car wash. We've done it before, some building, we've done some Rite-Aids into car washes. We've done, we're doing one in Warren right now at 12 and Mound, a building that we're making into a car wash too.
Under, under construction now?
Not yet, just real soon, a month or two. So we're going to open several washes this year in Metro Detroit, so we're looking forward to working.
Will you have any photos when you have the public hearing?
What's that?
Do you have photos of what you've?
Yeah, actually, we will, some renderings probably of what we're going to do here. So you'll be able to see exactly what we're going to do.
All right.
It's repurposing a building, usually the cities like that.
Yes.
No pets or animals will be harmed in the process. I know it's.
You learn, you're learning quickly, gentlemen.
Can you include a pet wash in there?
Yeah. That's a great idea.
Let me write that down.
That's becoming popular.
Yes, it is.
It's becoming popular.
Okay. This is a setting for public hearing. Can we have a motion, please?
I move that rezoning request 1 dash 1 dash 2024 dated November the 17th, 2023, submitted by Manic and Smith Group LLC to rezone a portion of property located at partial identification number 22 dash 23 dash 02 dash 103 dash 025 Oakland County, Michigan, from P1 vehicle parking to B3 general business district be set for public hearing of the planning commission's next available regular meeting agenda, which they would set that.
It's, it'll be at the next one in March.
March?
March 21st.
March 21st, that's the third Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, moved and supported. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. See you back March 21st.
Thank you, see you then.
Okay. Now, we're down to item C, planning commission and a report, adoption of report. Nobody else? Tom?
Yeah, we have one.
He's not paying attention.
Okay, you've got one, okay. Who wants to make the motion?
Well, I have a couple of comments on it, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're sure?
Who's, who's, whose report is this? Ours or whose?
This is the planning commission's report.
Looks like on page 11, we've got some mixed up data. So figure one goes 2017 through 2023, and the title is for 2018.
Gotcha.
Table five says 2023, yet the total number is 17, which matches the 2022 data.
Good catch.
Do you see that? Okay.
Gotcha.
And I, the other one, I think, Tanji, I think your name is spelled wrong on page?
It's, it's right.
Five? Oh, it is? Okay.
That's my full name.
Gotcha.
Thank you for that.
Those were, that was it, Chris.
I don't think this photo looks like us.
Yeah, I was.
That's one.
Yeah.
There was another photo, and I looked very angry. I was not a fan.
I think she was saying.
I didn't make it, so I don't know.
Oh, page, page six? I looked very angry.
Page six, I see.
Intense.
You look very thoughtful, Kristen.
Sure.
You don't like the pictures, that's the problem?
Yes, she's complaining about the pictures. Want it photoshopped?
Oh, this is on page five, where it says, when I assumed office, I assumed office in April of 2023.
Which page?
Five. Page five, in the chart, in table one.
We, we gave you your credit?
Yeah, I, I believe that's the same as Tanji, too.
Then it will be for all of us, we all came.
Yeah, we are, Kristen as well, we all came in in 2023.
We all did.
Tanji, Danielle, Kristen.
Yeah, that was last year.
And Kristen, all three of us.
Which is three?
Kristen, they got 22.
So who's, who's on the, on the table? So Tanji, Danielle, Kristen? That's it?
I believe so, yeah, just us three.
And which date is that?
I don't know about the other dates.
Okay, I'll, I'll tell Jerry.
Yeah, so my date, April 25th, 2023. And Tanji, did you come in March? So the, the month and the days are right, it's the year is wrong for the three of us.
Got that?
Yep.
It's a three-year term.
So then it would be 22.
No.
We'll confirm that, I'm not 100% sure that.
No, we assumed office last year. We took over other people's seats. I took over someone else's seat.
We'll confirm it, we'll confirm it.
Yeah. I, I know when I started coming, I know.
And the big pay.
Yeah, exactly, I know when I started getting paid.
Can I make the motion?
Please.
I move to adopt the 2023 planning commission annual report with the changes as we suggested that Chris wrote down and took notes of.
Your support? So moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
You, you get to present it, right? You get to go to city council next meet, next, next month.
We shouldn't have not adopted this then. Chris, what are you laughing now? You've got to come here and hold my hand when I do this, you know that.
You're right.
Vice chair.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're out of town next month, right?
Yeah, why are we having a meeting over spring break? I'm not going to be here. Somewhere warm.
That's the day before.
All right. Let's go back to, where's my agenda?
Do we need to discuss whether or not we should have a meeting?
Yes, we need to approve the amendments for January 18th, special meeting, and January 18th regular meeting, and January 25th, the capital improvements plan. I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve. So January 18th, 2024 special meetings, January 18th, 24 regular meetings, and January 25th, 2014 regular meetings.
Moved and supported. You got that, Cheryl? Okay, good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Except I don't know who supported it.
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments, there is no public present. Commissioner's staff comments. Anybody have anything to say?
When's, when are, when are our meetings, upcoming meetings? March?
Usually the third Thursday of each month, so.
Okay, is that an issue?
The 21st of March.
The 21st of March?